Thank you. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence for the following. Eleanor Jones, a former member of the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education. Betty Carter, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence for the following. Eleanor Jones, a former member of the North Syracuse Central. Okay, I'm going to begin again in the moment of silence. Eleanor Jones, a former member of the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education. Betty Carter, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Leland Daniels, Jr., a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. John Gouci, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Michael Stassi, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Paula Ukrainiak, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Frederick Keller, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you.
Mr. President, could I say a few words?
Yes, Mr. Crabtree.
Because two of these people, one I knew really well. Eleanor Jones was president of the North Syracuse Board of Education when Blaze Salerno was superintendent. So we're talking back in the late 70s. So she was president. But the one I want to talk about means a lot to me personally. There's people that you meet in your life that make a difference. And Paulie Kranek was a special needs student when I had Matt Herman as a fifth grader here at Pitcher Hill. Matt will remember that down the hall where Chris's office was, was a classroom that had special needs students. And as I took Matt's class to the library once a week with Mrs. Ely, this young lady would say hi to me. She was 13, 14 years old. It was 1972. I'm 22 years old. I'm young. And this young students are saying hi to me. I had never worked with special needs students before. But until a week ago, we have been friends. Paula graduated 1976. We had to use that classroom. So that special needs classroom was sent over to the high school, which was North Syracuse High School at the time. She graduated in 1976. You know, I think of Mrs. Wheeler being here and she has special needs kids. I know Dawn has a building with special needs children. Back then, we didn't have that number of students in our school. They didn't come to school. But Paul was fortunate to come and graduate from our, our school system. Every Valentine's Day, every Halloween and every Christmas and my birthday, she would send me a card and thank me for who I was and what I did. And this is a great loss. For me, it's a great loss for this community. And, and I again thank North Syracuse for having this opportunity to speak tonight. And Paula loved Disney and Paula went to more concerts than I ever did. And she enjoyed life and we have lost a great person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. And Ms. Marizio is excused from tonight's meeting. And we're going to begin with presentations. We have this first up, the Cicero Road Elementary School BPT. So if you can come forward, I'll turn it over to you.
I'm Kathy Wheeler and I'm here with Cindy Kanata, our reading specialist, Dawn Matthews, fourth grade teacher, and Jennifer Malcolm, third grade teacher. Members of the BPT. I'm going to share my screen. Our first slide just gives you a little bit of who we are at Cicero L, what our population is, and it's remained very stable. The, the presentation that was in your board packet had the plus and minuses for each of these things. But because it was fairly stable and because it, those numbers kind of were distracting, I took them out. We have English language learners, 7% of our population. Students with disabilities, 17%. And of course, that includes our speech students and our, our autistic students, our learning disabled students, anybody that has an IEP. Very few kids with 504 plans and 25% free and reduced eligibility. Cindy's going to take us through our AIMS web data.
As Kathy said, I'm Cindy Kanata, one of the AIS teachers at Cicero. We spent a lot of time, especially this year, working and looking at this data. We've had the opportunity through data teams to have meetings with each grade level. And coming up in a few weeks, we'll be having more meetings after our second round of benchmark testing. And if you look at these students, something that I tend to notice is that, or tend to question, excuse me, is that I'm wondering if any of these students had pre-K because it was right in the middle of the COVID. And I'm wondering if a lot of parents were sending their children because personally I have friends who weren't for that reason. So some of these kids, this might be their first experience, more so than in the past, where children were usually going to school for pre-K and other programs before. So when you're looking at those numbers and we have such high percent in the tier three, it's definitely a concern and we're working on it. But at that age too, it's great because they tend to make a lot of progress quickly. So we're hoping that this next benchmark will see a big difference for them. Yeah. And same thing with these first graders. So these first graders for their kindergarten year was last year. So they started school with the hybrid model. So they're having two days a week and one virtual day, and then it switched over. So again, I think that these numbers directly reflect their lack of instruction from the foundational skills that they really need to present well on these assessments. Second grade, we get a little better with these numbers, which is hopeful because these kids had from September to March of kindergarten. That was before we closed in March. So they had a good chunk at the beginning. And then also they had that next year, first grade was their hybrid with two days a week and the virtual. And the math numbers look a little better than the ELA. But again, I, as you see the next slide, it's a big difference with our percent in the tier two. And those children had all of kindergarten and up through March of first grade. So those foundations were built at an age appropriate level for them and they were really able to take that and grow with it. Whereas the other students kind of have missed out a little bit on that opportunity. And we're working hard to fill those gaps and get them there. And same thing with the fourth grade. It's 26% and the 33% for the tier three is what I tend to gravitate to. Those are students that have the most needs. And those numbers for the tier three, that also includes, for most cases, the ENL students and the CTD students as well. There are some CTD and ENL students who were not in that tier three, which is great. And it's a celebration for us, I think.
I'm Jen Malcolm. I teach third grade at Cicero L. So for our building goals, I, I think our biggest goal is we want to increase those literacy scores and those AIMS web scores by 10% at each grade level. So we have our meetings coming up soon for that. And I think we're all working hard in our PLCs to help each other out with ways to help students grow. We are analyzing the benchmark data, the AIMS web, Hagerdy, Sunde, all of those things that we're using in the classroom to work towards those goals. I, I think this is the first year probably that all of us are using a systematic phonics instruction program. So I, I think we'll see a huge benefit from that as well as the interventions that are in place for, by AIS and also our win and PLC groups.
So for our attendance data, you can see the numbers. We have 36% of our students that are chronically absent as of this year compared to the 20% last year. Prior to that, even though official data was not collected, we knew that we had less than 3% who were chronically absent. And we've talked a little bit about that. And a lot of it is due to the quarantines that students have. So some things that we work on, our goal is to be able to decrease that number of students by 10%. So we are monitoring attendance. We are keeping track. We don't send letters to families who are out on quarantine. But if it is a chronically absent student, letters will be sent out as well as follow up with Mrs. Wheeler.
So the BIMAS, the BIMAS data, I know you've seen this from other schools and sometimes it's reported differently. We decided that we, we chose to use the core competencies as a way to look at the data because these are areas that we're teaching our students. So if you look at the core competencies right along here, these are the things we're teaching students within our classrooms, by classroom teachers and our ADAPAP lessons and with any small group counseling that we're doing as well as our building behavior expectations, which I'll be sharing with you in the next slide. So that's the way that we look at it. If you look at our strength and our typical, most of our students fall within this, this range where they either have a strength in that competency or they are, they have typical competencies in around that area. Our risks are places where we can look at using a school-wide intervention, a school-wide strategy to improve those competencies for our students. When we looked at individual grade levels, we could see that our second, third and fourth graders were doing much better in those areas than our kindergarten and first graders, which you can imagine, you know, self-awareness and self-management is, you know, certainly gets better as students, as students mature. So our building goals around that are to increase those core competencies. And we're using strategies like our positivity project, the second step lessons that our counselors give as well as our ADAPAP lessons. We also use calm connect and zones of regulation. In many of the classrooms and many of the service providers use that as a way to get kids to be in touch with their emotions. I wanted to share just one slide. So our BPT and our character ed committee worked together to come up with one building-wide expectation for all, no matter where you are in the building. If you're in the cafeteria, if you're in Mrs. Matthews' class, if you're in music, if you're on the bus, that we would have the same kind of language so that kids, we can start teaching this to kids. So these are just some examples of the posters that we're using and that we're teaching students. So for every area, these are the, this is the acronym for SOAR, like an eagle, like we are. And in each place, there are the rules that they're going to follow, the expectations that we have for each of them. We found that talking with other professionals in the building that, you know, different teachers had different sets of expectations and it was difficult in music class to talk to kids about it. So we're using the same language in, in every area. So that's just something that we're, we are working on. And then in our, when we meet in our PLCs, in addition to our academics and how to help students in math and reading proficiencies, we're also talking about the core competencies and, you know, what students might need in those areas. And finally, we just wanted to give a shout out to our PTG. They continue to really be supportive with all that they've had to kind of pull back on. You know, they like to be really, really active in school and we haven't let them be because of COVID. But they've been really creative in still supporting us and still having events for our students. We were able to have a Halloween event and a holiday, Christmas time event outside. We're probably not going to be able to do that for a few more months. But they've been really supportive by continuing to support teachers. What do they call them? When they, mini-grants, giving teachers money when they want to do something fun for the kids. And they have an active Facebook, a very positive active Facebook page that supports other parents. All right. Anybody have any questions for us?
Questions, comments?
I do for you. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Beth.
The Positivity Project is, how long have you been doing that and is that district-wide?
It's not district-wide. There are many schools who are doing it. We've, but we're in our third year, I believe. Maybe fourth year. Last year, we didn't get to do very much of it. And we're actually just starting to pull it back again. Some teachers use it regularly throughout their every day. And sometimes it's just a theme. So each month, there's a theme that we focus on.
Okay.
But it's not school, it's not district-wide. I think every school has something, but Positivity Project is something that we put to them.
Okay. That's a great program. It's, you know, highly recognized all throughout the country and it's really taking hold of a, a lot of districts and.
And they've given us a lot of resources.
It's very teacher-friendly because it's made by teachers, which is nice. Sometimes you get someone who has something and it's pie in the sky. Really easy to implement for, I mean, coming out of the mouse of teachers because, you know, there's a lot on their plate. But it really fits in with a lot of the curriculum that the kids are learning. And I think we all could talk about character ed and even has some mental health issues in there that help kids focus on that. So I'm glad to hear that you're doing the positivity program.
It was much along those lines of, but thinking more of the mental health of the kids that haven't had a year or two of reduced time. Are you finding you have enough support to handle the emotional distress really these kids are finding or feeling?
Yeah, I, we've seen a great increase in student anxiety and in some, you know, student behavior. But we do have a lot of support this year. The addition of a Promise Zone counselor, three days a week, has been really, really beneficial. We have a full-time guidance counselor that we've had for a couple of years now. And that, you know, that continues to make a big difference for us. And just in general, our staff is so supportive of one another when they need help. So yeah, I do feel that we're, do you guys feel that way? Yeah, I, I feel that we're very much, very well supported this year.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Kathy, when was the AIMS web data collected? I mean, when?
It was, it was late, mid to late September and we'll be doing it again mid-January. So we, we are confident that we're going to find that we're going to have a lot of growth in that area. We're still going to have a number of students who require intervention. And, you know, we'll continue to do that. But I, I think our numbers are going to look a lot better in the middle of January.
Definitely old data. For some of these kids too, it was their first experience with testing like this when they're starting, especially the way last year was turned up to, that's why some of the older grades have higher percent higher of the tier three as well.
Your answers went into my next question, so that's great. Because I was wondering if we needed to increase the frequency of when we assess just so we can stay on top of it. And do you have all the resources you need to help the kids at risk?
Yes, I think we do. I think that, so as far as frequency of assessment, the students who were in the red, they're being assessed regularly, just really quick, you know, quick snapshots because this full-scale benchmarking takes a couple of weeks. And that takes our AIS teachers and our TAs offline for teaching because they're assessing. So I think three times a year is, you know, makes sense. And I think with the addition of the instructional TAs this year, that's been really, really beneficial as well as the coach, you know. We would love to have a little bit more, but we'll, you know, we'll address that when we, when we need to do that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us.
And we now have the North Syracuse Early Education Program, BPT. When you're ready. Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. We're here from the North Syracuse Early Education Program. I'm Dawn Hussain, principal at the school. And I have with me tonight Kate DeBodis and Michelle Shellcross, our BPT co-chairs. So Kate will be doing the majority of our presenting tonight as our, our main chair. So I'll turn it over to her.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and happy new year. Welcome to 2022. You can go ahead to the next slide. So a few years ago, the BPT was tasked to create a brand new, or a new brand for the school while also revising our mission and our vision statement. So I'll give you a moment to take a look at our new brand. Go ahead. And then our mission and our vision statement have not changed from the last few years, but we did want to include them. So for those of you who may not know, the North Syracuse Early Education Program has a unique partnership with the North Syracuse Central School District. Although all of the employees are NSCSD staff and the building is owned and maintained by the district, our funding is separate from the school district and comes directly from the county and state through a completely different funding system. We educate students with disabilities from all districts that reside within Anadaga County. And our students who pay tuition, our general education students, can reside beyond Anadaga County. Right now, however, 71% of our student population is made up of NSCSD residents. So most of the students that we are educating will transition to our own district's elementary schools. Something else up there to note is our increasing free and reduced lunch numbers, which qualify us for additional Title I funding. Last year, 62% of the students qualified for free and reduced lunch. And our social worker continues to seek the applications for this current school year. As you can see, we have many wonderful staff members that support the students of our school. This school year, we increased therapy staff to meet student needs based on their mandated IEP services. At NSCEP, we're surrounded by a professional community of district and non-district employees who support our students and our staff every day. We have had the very exciting opportunity to engage in a number of grant-funded initiatives this year, allowing us to enhance the education of all of the students at NSCEP. This is our second year of implementing the second step social emotional curriculum with coaching and support from the Petals Program. Last year, the five full-day classrooms implemented the second step curriculum. And this year, seven half-day classrooms are implementing the curriculum with direct coaching support. As shown in the previous slide, our population of students who qualify for free or reduced lunch has significantly increased. And with that, we have received a much greater amount of Title I funding. This year, we developed a Title I committee to plan and implement the use of this funding. Some of the initiatives that we have started include a 2022 summer reading program, monthly parent training meetings, a social worker funded throughout the school year and in the summer, professional development for staff, and tuition assistance for at-risk students. We're also exploring ways to integrate before and after-school programming along with transportation for our tuition-paying general education students. We again qualified for the community-eligible provision this year, which allows us to provide a daily breakfast and/or lunch for all students. All students are assessed twice annually using the speed dial four to measure cognitive growth throughout the school year. We are now in the unique position of supporting the district's elementary schools with this assessment as it is used as their kindergarten screener. We also support the school district by completing standardized academic and related service assessments on all graduating special education students. Although this is not a requirement under the regulations of the Committee on Preschool Special Education, this full-scale testing process supports the CSE's ability to assess appropriate educational supports for their incoming kindergarten students. Other progress measures the school implements includes observation and data collection, trimester IEP updates, by annual report cards for general education students, the EDECA social and emotional scale, and the facilitation of multidisciplinary evaluations. In the 2020 to 2021 school year, NSCEP was one of the few schools in which all students attended five days a week. We found great success in our students attending in person and saw an overall attendance percentage of 91.73%. This was higher than the district average, which was about 87.99%. A committee was formed to review the chronically absent students this year, which meets monthly. As of mid-December, 19% of our student population was considered chronically absent, missing 18 or more school days. The attendance committee is finding that the main reason for the chronic absenteeism is due to the fact that our population is not yet eligible for vaccination. This causes students to quarantine at each potential exposure. And as you know, test results take time and preschoolers tend to show many COVID-like symptoms that require testing. Our health office and social worker have been instrumental in reaching out to families of chronically absent students. Social emotional learning has always been a cornerstone of the education of all students at NSCEP. Since 2020, these five pillars have guided our work with the implementation of the second step program into our school. This school year, we have focused on building wide second step implementation with common language and visuals. All staff have been trained and are using the same curriculum. The Petals Program is supporting the staff and students with. And half of our classrooms are using the EDECA screening tool and all classrooms are working with Lucille, our Petals coach. All families receive a weekly newsletter from the second step that highlights the topic of the week. And in November, our Coffee Connection parent training was facilitated by the Petals coach and one of our teachers to introduce second step to families. This graph shows you the data that was collected on the teaching behaviors of teachers observed by the Petals Coach throughout the spring of 2021. During each observation, the coach looks for the teaching behaviors such as modeling empathy, attempting to connect with children, having a difficult time, queuing children to use problem-solving strategies, and other behaviors. This scale shows that the behavior is seen from one "not at all" to five "always." As the year progressed, Petals Coach observed more of these teaching behaviors throughout each observation. The upward trajectory of the diagram shows the implementation of Second Step curriculum is carrying over into all facets of teaching throughout the school day. This diagram shows the progression of data collected from teachers on disruptive behaviors seen in all classrooms through the 2020 to 2021 school year. The general trend of this behavior that disrupts learning has decreased from October through June. This data shows the success of the students gaining foundational social and emotional skills. Another assessment that is new to the school this year is the use of the EDECA, also known as the DEVRO Early Childhood Assessment, in six of the twelve classrooms. This screening tool is completed by the classroom teachers and offers suggestions and supports to students who may demonstrate needs in the domains of initiative, self-regulation, attachment and relationships, and behavioral concerns. This diagram shows data collected after the first screening. As the school year progresses, the six classrooms will use the screener to assess growth and continued need in each domain. We also use a variety of SEL programs and strategies to differentiate to meet the students' needs, including the pyramid model, social thinking, trauma-informed practice, zones of regulation, and DIR floor time. Our building-wide social and emotional goal includes implementation of the Second Step in half-day classrooms, facilitating the EDECA screener in the full-day classrooms, and offering strategies to staff and families to meet the social and emotional needs of all of our students. We also have a number of academic initiatives in our classrooms and therapy spaces that include developmentally-appropriate play-based learning, Learning Without Tears, Seesaw, Second Step, Scholastic My Big World Magazine and Videos, and of course, the New York State Principal Foundation for the Common Core Standards. One of the ways that we measure the academic growth of all of our students is through the use of the speed dial assessment. In this graph, you can see the growth in the total score, the standard score, and the percentile rank of all students from September of 2020 to June of 2021. A trend that we have seen each year since we began to use the speed dial assessment is that although the students with disabilities tend to score lower in both total score and percentile rank, their percentage of growth is higher than the general education population. Another school-wide focus this year has been on community engagement, especially with the financial support of Title I funding to increase parent involvement, family support through our social worker, financial support for our at-risk students, and academic support for all students. Our PTO and nonprofit organizations continue to fundraise and seek grants to supplement program opportunities and materials for staff and for students. We have quite a lot to celebrate at NSCEP. Through Title I funding, we've been able to offer targeted professional development opportunities to the staff. We are currently fundraising for the second phase of our beautiful playground project, the installation of multiple shade structures to protect our young skin from the sun. NSCEP was chosen as a host for KeyBank's Neighbor's Day Initiative, in which KeyBank employees took an afternoon in September to plant trees and foliage around the playground. The Friends Organization was recently the recipient of a grant from Upstate Shredding, and Summerwood Pediatrics has offered multiple donations to support funding for an updated sensory space and for our gross motor equipment. Our Sunshine Committee is always hard at work to support the staff in the start staff in the school with joy, self-care, and appreciation. And we are thankful to have the support of Assemblyman Al Sterbe and the Speaker of the Assembly Carl Heastie as they visited our school this past fall. Although we have so much to celebrate, we still have many challenges to work through to sustain the high-quality education and therapy that the students receive at NSCEP. We recently learned that a bill for equitable funding for special schools, such as our 4410 preschool, was not signed by the governor after passing both the Assembly and Senate. With the bill not being signed, the inequities in the reimbursement methodology continue to fall short of covering the required costs of our program. Although the district has allocated some COVID relief funds to NSCEP, we continue to have COVID-related expenses that would not be reimbursable in the waiver process. The enrollment of tuition-paying students continues to be below capacity, which causes both a financial loss and compliance concerns for our required inclusive ratio. We lose many tuition-paying preschoolers to UPK due to the fact that UPK is offered at no cost for families, offers transportation, and is located where there are childcare opportunities. It is our hope that with the expansion of UPK funding throughout the nation, we can work with the school district to integrate UPK into the inclusive classrooms at NSCEP. Due to a lack of funding for 4410 preschool programs, many other schools have recently closed their doors, causing NSCEP to have an influx of complex, significantly delayed students who require intensive programming. Even though we've decreased or increased our therapy staff this year to meet the frequencies and ratios of the students' IEPs, we continue to struggle to meet their ever-increasing needs of students. And as with everyone, staff wellness has suffered due to COVID and increased demands in the classrooms and therapy spaces. We also wanted to note the hard work of the true heroes in our school, our registered nurse and our LPN. Their position was challenging before COVID and is now more even so. Moving forward, the BPT has multiple goals to take action on. We will continue to follow all New York State Department of Health and CDC guidelines, especially as they shift and change. The Sunshine Committee has a focus on promoting staff, student, and family wellness. We will continue to the implementation of the Second Step curriculum into all classrooms with fidelity. The BPT will continue to seek professional development opportunities specific to our craft and to support staff and wellness and mindfulness. And lastly, we will continue to advocate for equitable funding for 4410 programs and any alternate funding opportunities. Lastly, we would just like to thank all of our tireless BPT members who work so hard every single day in our school. And we'd like to know if you have any questions.
Questions? I can start if nobody. Oh, you see, something stuck out. You mentioned early on seventy-one percent of the student population are residents. And then you just said something at the end, which was a lot in a little sentence, I thought. So you mentioned you have your inclusive ratios at risk, which infects the funding, is my understanding. We've talked about this before. Does that high, is that a very high percentage of resident students as part of your population compared to where it's been? And does that impact the ratio? Is it my question? Do you want me to rephrase my questions?
I think what you're asking is, is that seventy-one percent?
Is that higher than normal?
Right. So, no, it's about average. I would say on any given school year, it'll range anywhere from sixty to seventy-five percent as North Syracuse. So I would say we're right in the average range for this year.
So somewhere near the end, you you said you talked about the loss of students to UPK programs, and you mentioned integrating UPK into NSCEP. Can you elaborate on what that, somebody, and what that would look like?
I'm here for the questions. So UPK students, every year we lose a handful of students to UPK registration. It happens where they register with us and then UPK enrollment happens, and then we get notification that families have are leaving the program to go to UPK because it's free preschool. So in most years, we haven't really taken specific data on that. We know it's a handful of students, but it hasn't really been a measurable number. This year, we lost over fifty thousand dollars specific to children that were registered in our program and then, you know, declined the registration in order to move on to UPK. So it's one point of data that we have just for this year, like an actual number that was actual tuition that was lost for students that moved to to UPK.
Yeah.
I just want to add in to that, Paul, that so with UPK, busing is typically an option for all students. Whereas if you are not a student who is part of our program and automatically have busing provided for you, then our paying preschool students, if they don't have before or after care established, like within a program, like a lot of the schools have the YMCA and different before and after care that they can at least be bused to. Our students don't have that option. They have to be transported to and from school. So that's another concern that we have because we don't have that transportation for our paying preschool students like UPK.
Thank you. Other questions?
As the Legislative Chair, I'm very disappointed in the news that we received this week from the Governor's Office, and I can tell you, Dawn, on Wednesday, we will be talking about this. This this really surprised me because it was unanimous in the Senate and also in the Assembly and even the Speaker came. And I also want to mention Senator Manion. You didn't have him, but he was there that day also. So we will not let this go because this is a school that needs funding. Thank you.
Just want to say something too.
Sure.
Dawn, you know, I loved your school. Thank you so much for your very thorough presentation. I appreciate it a lot. I just, a question came to mind when you were talking about the busing. For the non-paying students, is busing available for them from their
So for the special education students that qualify for the Special Education Program, the special class integrated setting transportation is provided for them, and it's funded through the county. It's not funded through their school district. It's funded through the county. So we use Bernie Bus Company. It's not North Syracuse Transportation. And that they contract directly with Anadaga County.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? If not, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege. I'm taking a cue from you, Mr. Crabtree. Because that somebody said it was twenty twenty-two, and then I sat here and I looked at you and I said, oh, my goodness, Michelle. It's gonna be forty years. She was a seventh grader in my first ever she's my math, science, and she's going to tell you I taught religion too back then. So true story. All right. Thank you.
And now let me just say that she's a great special ed teacher. Both of these ladies are wonderful, but I had a parent come up to me just this morning and comment on Michelle's connection that she's made with a pretty challenging student that we have. And a parent that's very passionate about the needs of her child, and she complimented Michelle on the bond that she's made with that child and was very hard to hard to put trust in us in the beginning of the school year. So it was a beautiful compliment that came today.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, we'll move along to our budget assumptions and fund balance reserves and foundation aid presentation from Mr. Keegan.
Good evening. It's really tough to follow those BPT presentations. They do such an amazing job, and I've got such a dry topic here, but I'll do the best I can. Let's see. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit about the twenty-two, twenty-three budget process. And what we like to do at the beginning of every year is just kind of take an accounting, where are we right now? What do we see on the horizon based on a variety of of pieces of information that we look at annually to try to assess the landscape and and lay the groundwork for for our planning process? So we'll talk about our fund balance and our reserves, some economic factors that that impact the budget, and maybe this year more so than in the past. Our revenue assumptions, we'll talk a little bit about the federal stimulus money, how that plays into the budget, foundation aid, as we always do, expenditure assumptions, and then we'll close with our budget timeline. So you may remember many of the numbers on this page. This the first number there, the unassigned fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. We were in a really good situation as we closed the books last year with a fund balance of about seven point nine one percent, or about fourteen point two million dollars. So much so that we made the decision, and the board and the voters supported it, to use about four million dollars of that to support the building renovations referendum that just passed last month, as well as the swimming pool referendum, which also passed. That was four million and two million dollars respectively. So at the end of this year, the the, at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, assuming that we have no additional positives or negatives that happen in our budget for twenty-one, twenty-two, we'll end the year with about eight point two million dollars of of fund balance, which calculating it as a percentage of our current year's budget, it's about four point five eight percent. So the the first conclusion is the district remains in good financial condition as it relates to its fund balance. Reserves, again, we've talked about this before, reserves are for specific liabilities we know about. And we've listed the mayor tax, tertiary workman's compensation, general liability, debt service fund, you know, capital, reserve, ERS, TRS, and employee benefit liability. We ended the year last year with about nineteen point two million dollars of of reserves in in better shape than we've ever been in in terms of covering those known liabilities. We made the decision again in connection with the referendum in December to take three million dollars out of the debt service fund and use that toward our our building renovations, again, reducing the burden on taxpayers for those projects. So again, at sixteen point two million dollars, we're still appropriately reserved for the liabilities that we are aware of. Let's look at some economic factors, though, as we head into the year. Consumer Price Index, we always talk about that because it affects our our tax cap, tax levy calculation, our state and local economy, unemployment, and then a population changes. So CPI or Consumer Price Index is relevant because when the tax cap legislation was put together, they made a determination that our tax levy can't grow. It's going to grow the lesser of two percent or the CPI. And so CPI is very relevant to us. And what we look at with CPI and what the state requires us to look at is the unadjusted, the unadjusted all items Consumer Price Index. So when people go on and they Google Consumer Price Index and they look at it, there's like tons of different items. It could be fuel. It could be just regular consumer retail items, you know, a lot of different items. And so this looks at all of those items together. And right now, the Consumer Price Index for the twelve-month period ended November twenty twenty-one has increased six point eight percent. So we are in, we're experiencing inflation. And the extent of it, we don't know because some of it's been caused by COVID and supply chain issues and 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 all of those things. And it'll be interesting to see what happens in once the supply chain normalizes and COVID's over. But it's important for us to know as we embark on this planning process that we're looking at a tax cap that'll only allow us to increase the tax levy by two percent, which is four point eight percent less than the inflation we've experienced over the last year. So that that's something to keep our eye on and potentially be concerned about. On the good news side, New York State seems to be in very good financial situation. They've got a $14 billion surplus. And they're, what I've read is that it's not due to the federal stimulus funds. We've seen a bounce back in the economy with people getting back out in the workforce and out in the, in the stores and spending money. And we've recovered largely significantly from the lost jobs. You know, we had lost almost 2 million jobs in New York State. And we've, we've got 56% of those back and it's continuing decline. So New York State is in good shape and that's, that's really positive news. And we'll see again, where, you know, our next big milestone here is the governor's budget proposal, which was about the middle of January and we'll see, middle of this month. And we'll see what the governor has to say about that. So local economy and business activity, we look at this regularly because it affects a lot of things. Local economy is an impact on unemployment, enrollment and the growth and decline of our tax base. Are people moving into the district, building houses, so on and so forth. Our labor market, as everybody knows, is extremely tight, which is creating pressure on both the cost and availability of labor, specifically our substitutes in all areas. I was kind of joking with the business office staff this morning. I told them all to bring in their hairnets and keep them at their desk because we may be working in the cafeteria. If we don't get any more food service workers, we're down there. And that's one of our tougher areas, but we're experiencing labor shortages everywhere. The full value of our property, and I think we all, this will be, maybe it's intuitive to all of us. We've watched the real estate market. The full value of property in our district has increased by 10.4%, which is, which is huge. I mean, housing prices have gone through the roof. And what that means is, and we've all talked about this before, that means when we increase our tax levy and we, we express it as a percentage of, of our prior year, you know, taxes, the increase in the property values has, has an impact on the relative tax rate. And we'll have to see how that develops as the, as the budget process goes on. Consistent with the national state economy, you know, we've certainly suffered greatly due to COVID-19. And, and I have to just say, you know, we talked about this at cabinet a little bit. Dan and I had a conversation recently. We don't know what the impact's going to be on the 2223 budget at this stage of the game. It's early, it's early to say. We certainly are concerned, but at this stage of the game, we're making no assumptions about what the COVID impact will be on 2223. We are seeing housing development. We have a big district, lots of different opportunities for people to live, whether it be in rental property or housing developments. And we are seeing development in our district and we are having the usual amount of tax tertiary activity, meaning people contesting their assessments. That's been particular, you know, particularly interesting with the increase in property values as a result of the strong housing market. Unemployment, I just want to point this out. I show you this chart every year, it's a bit of a blurry eyed chart. But if you look at the 2020 line item and you look at April through July into, into August, you see that our unemployment just skyrocketed during that period of time. But I'm happy to report that we're kind of back down to normalized levels. In October, it was 4.3%. What this means though is again, it speaks to the tight labor market, but at least we don't have a significant number of our taxpayers unemployed. This is just a graphical representation of that same data. Enrollment, Dan and I, we, you know, at cabinet, we talk about enrollment all the time. Dan and I had a recent conversation. We're right now at about 70, 7617, I think was our most recent number. And we're assuming, and you know, back of the envelope, we're assuming that it's going to go down about 100 students a year. I, I keep telling folks that I think it's going to level off, it can't continue to go down. This is a great community, again, with a lot of housing opportunities for folks. And so I remain optimistic that it's going to level off at some point. So just one more comment on enrollment. I just, I just also want to say that our declining enrollment does impact state aid. It impacts, you know, our class sizes, it impacts a lot of things in both positive and negative ways. I'll just make this one comment about our capital projects. You know, for so many years, the North Syracuse Central School District was kind of overcrowded. We had, we had more students in our buildings than our buildings really were designed for. So despite the fact we're, we're feeling this, this declining enrollment, what it's allowed us to do now is rationalize our space and use it differently. And maybe for the first time in the school's recent history, we're not overcrowded. And, and, and we can, we can spread out and use the spaces in different ways than we have been able to in the past. Revenue assumptions. You know, as I mentioned, we're in a really good positive situation with New York State in terms of their, both their financial situation and their commitment to fund, fully fund foundation aid. And so therefore I'm optimistic, we're optimistic that foundation aid will increase again for the 2223 school year. On the real property tax side, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna probably have an allowable levy growth factor of 2%. And it's going to be lower than our costs, cost increases that we're seeing due to inflation. On the federal stimulus side, we're lucky to have this money because we kind of view this as obviously critical funds to help the community overcome the damage done by COVID. But also funds that allow us to bridge the gap between where we are today and this increased foundation aid. So let's, let's talk a little bit about the federal stimulus money. To recap for everybody, we received the coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations. We call that CURSA. And that was $7.8 million that where I say we receive, we're in the process of receiving. And those funds have to be spent by September 30th to 24. We're using them primarily for academic recovery, instructional support and social emotional learning and including things like restorative practices, family engagement counselors and social workers, as you heard our BPT folks talk about. And we're also using it for health services and COVID testing. The American Rescue Plan, ARP, is $11.5 million. And those funds also have to be spent by September 30th to 24. And again, we're using those for academic recovery. Specifically additional teachers and reducing class sizes, teaching assistants and specialized teachers. Lost learning time. And, and this is where we're really trying to get summer and after school programming going. You know, scaling up what was, what happened last summer to again, provide supports for kids and closing those gaps. We're using this money for PPE. We're also using it for furniture and equipment. I just talked about how our buildings are finally not overcrowded. We've also talked about how our buildings are not furnished to meet the needs of our, the instructional needs of our teachers and students. And so we're looking at spending some of this money on furniture that will be easier to maintain and clean, easier to be more mobile and facilitate more dynamic instructional environments, getting away from the, the sidearm desks that we have so many of. And then we're really lucky, we've been able to actually use some of this American Rescue Plan money to support the North Syracuse Early Education Program, which, you know, those folks are incredibly innovative in their, you know, attracting funding and making the most out of every penny they get. And so we're happy that we can, that some of that money can go to help them offset some of their COVID losses. I'd be remiss if I didn't say this in a public meeting. We welcome the community feedback on the use of coronavirus or CURSA and ARP funding. And I say community feedback, I mean, all school community feedback from stakeholders, you know, families and other members of the community on how this money's being spent. And, and so that we can make sure that it's addressing the needs of the entire school community. Back to foundation aid. So for fiscal 2122, I don't think I need to explain foundation aid to you guys. I think we've talked about it quite a bit. The good news was that in 2122, we got a commitment from the governor and legislature that they are going to fully fund foundation aid by 2024. And that's really exciting. For fiscal 2122, the year we're in right now, we received an additional $3.5 million of foundation aid. That was an increase of 7.5%. As of now, we're still $10 million below the formula, $10 million a year less than we should be receiving. So, you know, we believe that based on the strength of the state's financial condition, based on the commitments that they've made, that we're going to see another decent increase in foundation aid. And that foundation aid increase is critical to sustaining the initiatives that we're implementing with federal stimulus funds right now. This is the infamous chart I show you every year. If I add any more rows to it, we're not going to be able to read it. But the last row, 2122, shows that approximately $10 million deficit. So just to be clear, we should be receiving this year in the 2122 school year, $60.1 million of foundation aid. Instead, we're receiving $50.2 million of foundation aid. $10 million is a lot of money and would have a huge impact on, on our instructional programs. Expenditure assumptions. So let's talk about health benefits. We just had a HOC meeting today, Health Oversight Committee meeting. And I have to, I have to compliment that group as well as, you know, just, you know, our teachers' union or our healthcare administrator and, and the partners that we have, consultants and plan administrators like Excelis and Proact that have worked with us. We have had tremendously positive experience in healthcare. We've beaten the industry growth rates consistently for the last several years. I have to say, I, you know, I think we might have pulled the last rabbit out of a hat. I don't know that we have anything on the horizon that is going to necessarily reduce the increased rates of healthcare. And as a matter of fact, we're seeing, you know, with the, with COVID, the impact of COVID, we're seeing in the first quarter of this year, an increase in our healthcare, significant increase in our healthcare above the rates I'm quoting here. We are, Mark, we're looking at market increases of 5.5% to 7%. We're running significantly higher that right, than that right now. And I'm hopeful, hopeful that that'll normalize again as we move away from COVID. And that's, I only highlight healthcare benefits because it's such a huge expense for our district. And that's why it's, it's on this list of expenditure assumptions. Retirement costs, TRS and ERS. Again, I say this every year, but both TRS and ERS though do an excellent job of managing the retirement costs for our teachers and our employees. Because they take a long-term view, they're committed to fully funding the reserves so that we don't have teacher and employee retirement systems that are underfunded, that will create a huge liability for us down the road. And so this year, what they're saying, the TRS board is saying that we should be thinking about a 10 to 10.5% range, that's a percentage of payroll for TRS employees. And currently, we're at 9.8%. So it's not a huge increase. I think that's largely due to the strong performance, the stock, stock market. On the ERS side, we're actually looking at a decrease. We're currently at 13%, I'm sorry, 18.1% and we're going to go down to 13%. So again, a little bit, a little bit more good news there on the retirement side. Salaries, all of our contracts have been negotiated. We're looking at increases of about 3.5% for the 2223 school year. Fuel costs, we've all watched the prices at the pump go up. I will tell you that although school fuel costs have gone up, remember that it's, it's transportation-able. So because of our transportation aid rate, we don't experience all the benefits when it goes down, but we don't experience all the cost increases when it goes up because it's covered by transportation aid. Energy costs, we're still working with NISMIC. We've got a new contract, new three-year supply contract and our budget will reflect those increased, or those rates. And they, they are an increase. We are seeing increased energy costs in those contracts. In terms of the process, so right now, again, we're, we're looking at a view from 10,000 feet. We spent a lot of time working on our BOSI's budget. We've had everybody in cabinet involved, our directors heavily involved in looking at the BOSI's budget. All of our principals are out working on their building budgets. And they'll be submitting those to us within the next couple of weeks. And like I said, we looked at budget assumptions tonight. And on the 24th, we're going to come back to the board. We hopefully at that point will have the governor's budget proposal, our preliminary tax cap calculation and some projections on fund balance and reserves, although I have to prepare you, I don't anticipate that they'll change much in the next two weeks. In the end of February, we'll have our initial budget. And by then, we'll have a beat on retirements and we'll get some feedback from the legislature on what they're thinking about in terms of either additions to the governor, but governor's budget proposal or other changes. And then in March, we'll give the board another update, we'll give a final tax cap. We'll ask you to approve a bus bond proposition and some, approve the notice of budget hearing and election. And then we'll ask you in April to approve the proposed budget. And obviously throughout that process, we'll have a lot of discussion and deliberation about the, about the budget. In April, we'll do the election and budget vote for BOSI's budget hearing on May 3rd. And then we'll have our budget vote with the community on May 17th. So that's, that's the process. It's hard to believe that we're embarking on the 2223 budget process already, but it is upon us. Any questions? All right, more to come.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no one signed up to speak today. So I'll move into Board of Education Committee reports and I'll turn to Mrs. Scanlon.
Our next policy committee is, meeting is Tuesday, January 18th. And I wanted to remind the board of the information we shared with them, the Erie One BOSI Service, where they offer a way to maintain our board policy manual would be cost savings to the district for legal costs. And I know we had the holidays, but when you get a chance, look at that. And you know, if we have any questions, we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Crabtree.
As I said, we'll be meeting on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's comments.
Thank you. I do want to comment on both BPT presentations because I can say that one of my children did attend the North Syracuse Early Education Program as an identified student in the first year, in the second year as a non-identified student. And the, the service that they provide is exceptional. And both of my children ended up attending Cicero Elementary. So I, we had the benefit of both presentations. And I can tell you as, as a, as a parent with children that were in the district, both buildings do an absolutely outstanding job. The next thing I want to talk about is what has been on every news all around is testing kit in the distribution. So today we did have the distribution of test kits at every single location, including the district office. The process seemed to go smoothly. Parents were coming here on a regular basis until about 5:30 at the district office. We were trying to make sure we had times that were during the day and after school hours and trying to make sure we were accommodating, if you have multiple children in different buildings so that you could do one-stop shopping. So we will continue to take a look at, at that. And we will probably be seeing some of the results as people have tested their children and such. I know Liverpool was also handing out today and Syracuse City was handing out today as well. Did have a conversation and I don't want to steal Terry's thunder, but the canteen meeting, we have once a month. And one of the things that we did hear is that our social workers and counselors were very busy today. And just as follow-up from the holiday break and things that are, were occurring during that time. So there is still a lot of need with students and families out there. And the last thing I have is we are monitoring absences, taking a look at our COVID and COVID numbers. And you hear a lot of things out there and Syracuse City had a staffing issue. So those are things that we're looking at on a regular basis and we will continue to pull that, that data. So, but the one thing is that So, but the one thing is that we do know that in-person instruction is probably the most valuable thing that we can provide for our students. And as you see from the data in all the BPT presentations, when we were not in-person full-time versus when we, when students did have that, thank you.
Thank you. Any Board of Education comments?
As Dan mentioned, of course. We did, as Dan said, meet with the canteen and the principals. And we do know that the, the stress of the pandemic and the emotional toll it's taking on all of our kids and our staff is being talked about, dealt with, but also the resources that are available to the teachers and the students are available online. We're trying to make it more and more outwardly available to anyone who might need it. We're trying to reach everybody that we can and it's, it's tough to do. So we need as many people that can get to the websites and take a look at those things that are available, the resources available to them, to please reach out. And if you're in need of help, please say something. And we've got our kid, our children advocates out there for the kids and doing everything we can possibly think of for, through this difficult, it's still very difficult time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Crabtree.
Fortunately, I wasn't here last month, so I get double. And I was listening, mister, when you said that. One thing is in June, we celebrate salutatorian and valedorian and also teacher of the year. In the paper now, we have some scholastic sports students who are nominated as the top of their sports. There is one football player, when I say top, top three in section three. There's a football player, there was a volleyball player and there was a girl soccer. I would like us as a board to honor, there'll probably be less than ten students who are being nominated and they're presented the award in June, it's the end of June. So they're competing against West Hill, they're competing against. But I think our students who have been nominated as F, top three athlete in that sport should be honored by us. That's just a suggestion that I like to give to Mr. Bowles because I notice we just had a girl soccer player and we're, you know, talking the top of the county. The second thing is, as I was not feeling well, I, I went online at Facebook and I noticed that Main Street, and I sent this to Dawn, has a lot of history on Facebook about the school and going back to when it was a high school in the forties. I believe it was the forties and there's pictures. And then I found Reardon, which was an elementary school. So we have a lot of history out there that if you, if you would like to know a little bit about the fifties and sixties and where we were. I wasn't here to give the OCMBOSI's report, but I do want to talk about two things. As Don said, the financial situation in New York State is very good. And the Board of Regents met last month and they've asked for an increase of two point five billion for our schools in the state and also to make up the foundation aid. So we have the Board of Regents supporting us in that. As you know, maybe not, no, the chancellor is the superintendent and was a former superintendent. So he is working closely, and Dan would get information on this, with the new teacher certification. They're working closely with superintendents, with NICE at the union to change some teacher certifications for New York State because of the lack of staff. So I'm glad that they're working together on this and hopefully, they want it to be rigorous, but I know it's much more rigorous than when I got my teaching certification. I mean, it, one of the things is you got to do these videos. I never had to do that. They're time-consuming and is that really part of what you want? The unfortunate thing, Mr. Bowles, is testing grades three through eight. Our state believes that we should not be doing this during COVID. However, Mr. Biden's, President Biden's Secretary of Education does not, he does like testing. And even though we wrote something last year to get out of it, it wasn't accepted. But I want you to know that the chancellor said, I'm going to do it again. What is the word? I'm trying to think of the word.
Waiver.
A waiver, do a waiver, but it doesn't look promising. So we may have to test our kids again, though it was only one day. And then last but not least, I'm up for reelection for OCMBOSI's. And Jen will be getting a letter from the BOSI's district clerk the next time we meet. And I would ask for your support. I would like to represent this school board for three more years. I've learned a lot about BOSI's. I enjoy going to the meetings and bringing back information to you. There will be a meeting on April sixth where your nominees are presented along with the budget. And then as Don said, on April eighteenth, this school board will vote on the administrative budget of BOSI's along with the candidates. And then Dan knows that I've asked him for, and I know Mary enjoys this, OCMBOSI to come do a presentation on that night about where we've been there. So I'm going to ask for your support. I'll be sending each of you a letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll go to routine action items and ask for a motion of consideration approval of the minutes of the meeting of December twentieth. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried if I get a motion for items B and C. Motion, Ms. Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Kruger. B and C, other consideration of classification and placement of students, disabled students for both home instruction and in the school by the Committee of Special Ed. Any discussion on that as before, seeing none, all in favor. Pose, those are carried. Discussion action, item A, text collection procedures. If I get a motion placed that before, it's motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Item B, resolution to create a one point O English as a new language teacher, district-wide. Motion, please, motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Item C, amendment of the twenty-one, twenty-two district calendar. Motion placed it before, it's motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion or questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, carried. Acknowledgement of gifts, D, please, a motion, please, placed it before us. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Declaration of non-marketable surplus. Motion placed it before us, please, motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. We have one retirement today to acknowledge, that is Joseph Scotch. If I pronounce it right, I'm sorry, he's custodial worker one, retiring with nine years of service. Thank you. And instructional personnel report, A, if I get a motion to place that before us. Motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion on A? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose. Item A, carried and support staff, B. Motion placed it before us, motion, Mr. Herman, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor. Pose that is carried. I'll make a motion for executive session. The motion is to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment records of two individuals with no action to follow. If I can get a second, please, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor. Pose that is carried, we're in executive session. A motion for meeting adjournment, please. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Herman. Seeing no discussion, all in favor. Pose. We are adjourned. Seven twenty-ish.